The chance to talk to high school age kids about the Middle East, the religion of Islam. And unfortunately, in the last seven years, a rising current of Islamophobia, anti-Muslim bigotry, and anti-Arab racism that has swept over our country and much of the world. This has come to a head over the last week as we've seen the horrifying massacre of Muslims in prayer in Christchurch, New Zealand. For the last three years, Salem, the group that I'm a part of, has been putting on a Celebrate Islam Week to encourage positive reflection of the religion of Islam and the adherence to the faith, including the Muslims who live here in Missoula. Many of those are refugees. I'm also integrated into the refugee community. I speak to Arabic-speaking and Muslim refugees a lot. And they have always said Missoula has been nothing but the most welcoming place they've ever been short of the homes that they left. Nobody has ever been ridiculed because of the hijab they're wearing. Nobody's ever been spoken to in a threatening way. And because Missoula is so welcoming, I feel good coming before you and asking that you come out and show positive support for the Muslims who live in our community and coming to some of the events that we have planned for Celebrate Islam Week, which is going to be April 8th through the 12th. If it's proper council etiquette, I'd like to just distribute these to you guys.
Feel free, Mr. Moore. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Other general comment this evening? Ms. Romero?
Hi. My name is Letitia Romero. And Amelia, did you want to come up? Come on. Well, she had something that she wanted to say. Maybe she will, maybe she won't. Maybe she'll do it next time. Okay, we'll come up here. Yeah, so I'll just go in the meantime. My name is Letitia Romero. I got a word for it. I'm sorry. I'm here with my daughter to tell city council to try harder. Try harder standing up and fighting for what is vital and important to our community, our environment and our planet. Her name is Mother Earth. Please stop being afraid to break through the bureaucracy and insolent disposition that corporations have for our natural world and her people. Last week, in the Missoula Current, an article titled "Plastic Throwaways Escape Missoula Landfills: Littering Hillside Above I-90." The article spoke about our plastic garbage being uncontainable. A quote from the article, "Even in a moderate wind, plastic bags are the bane of our existence. The wind will pick them up like a little kite, even on a good day. We're chasing those things all over the place." Republic Services General Manager Glenda Bradshaw said. Single-use plastic bags, plastic bottles have got to go. We don't want them here in our city. They are detrimental to our waters and our precious land. Recycling does not happen as it should. And in fact, our nation's recycling routes is being refused at China's ports and other nations. We can no longer ship our garbage out. Plastic waste is a planetary emergency, and we need to start acting as it so. My hopes are that city council starts swapping out passive language such as, "It is unsatisfying to just tell people we can't do anything and pass on a legal opinion on why." Sigh. For immediate and maddening language that speaks like our house is on fire because it is. Another example of lame action and intent when our planet is in extreme environmental degradation is stated in the Missoula Current article. In August, Missoula adopted its Zero by Fifty Plan, under which the city will have zero waste within 50 years by using only sustainable materials that can't be recycled. Part of the plan directs the city to explore restrictions on single-use disposables like plastic bags, plastic straws, and styrofoam. The plan that directs the city to explore restrictions on single-use disposables is very disheartening to read. We should have been acting yesterday, not just beginning to explore ways to restrict single-use plastic bags. In 50 years, we will be lucky to have a balanced and restored ecosystem. Missoula can and will be banning single-use plastic bags and bottles in the near future. Boston, Chicago, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Seattle, Washington D.C., Portland, New York, Boulder are all cities that have passed ordinances, bans, fees on plastic in one form or another. Missoula has none. We can and shall do better.
We're at about four minutes, Ms. Romero.
Okay. For our planet, for our water, for our children, this is only the beginning as these beautiful, strong, and resilient kids here learn how to hold elected politicians accountable, and we will be back.
Thank you. Other general comment this evening? Mr. Moore?
Thank you. As at least the city council knows that I sometimes bring up the subject of Missoula Redevelopment Agency and TIF taxes and so forth. I do, Jesse, I do. I bought two of these things where the people who was asking for the handout had stated that they would build the projects if they received no money from the MRA. In other words, the benefit of the 10, 15 million, whatever it is, on the shopping center would be there whether the taxpayers gave the owners 10, 20 million dollars at all. Same thing for the hotel. Three, nearly $4 million given to the owners of the hotel, the new hotel, of course. He stated that the project would be completed. Those $4 million, Charleston taxpayers, that the mayor is primarily, is making the taxpayers pay to get, I guess, to get the benefit when nothing is necessary to get the benefit. So you're just paying it. And I'd been misplaced this article where Brad, I can't say the last name, Representative House District 97, stated in one of the meetings that the Stockman Bank would have also have been built if you hadn't given them their million and a half, $3 million, whatever it's going to be. So right there is over $20 million in total that you, mayor, city council, is charging to the taxpayers when it doesn't have to be for you to get the same benefit. Where are we thinking? How are we thinking? I got this in the mail. I guess it's from the food bank. 1,000-plus families in our store every week, every week. 650-plus senior deliveries every week. 1,025 kids in power packs, which I have no idea what that is, every week. 600-plus after-school meals every day. Is this the city we live in? And y'all are professing to be such a great place to live where that kind of need exists? And if you really want to see need, drive down Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other general public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Andy Helsel. I'm from Ward 2. I'm also here today to talk about plastic and waste generally. It's the duty of the municipal system to meet the needs of its residents. Those needs often include services such as water, gas, electricity, and waste. As I understand, and I did my best to fact-check this, it is not Missoula City law that recycling occurs, and so in many cases it doesn't. And recycling is really like the most basic form of waste reduction. That's the thing that most folks do easily. They have a harder time reducing their use, they have a harder time reusing, but most folks, if asked to recycle, this city doesn't even ask and require its residents to recycle. So I have little faith in our ability to then move to the next absolutely necessary step, which is to ban plastic use in this city, starting with plastic bags. The plastic bags that you go to get at the grocery store are terrible anyway. They don't actually work. They rip immediately and then just go to the trash. It's hard to reuse them, even as a person who cares. It's not hard to bring a reusable bag to the grocery store. And if a grocery store refused to allow you to take a plastic bag, I guarantee you people would figure out how to get their groceries to their car. It's not a hard thing to do. You can say that your hands are tied from the state, but you are the people in power. So there has to be a way. I think it's really completely reasonable to say there's no reason that a city that spends a great deal of effort, thank you, to own the water system and has drinkable, safe water, safe drinking water, needs to have in every store, plastic water bottles that go in the trash. It's not okay. We have to figure out a way to change those basic things. And people, I mean, they need to use differently. My daughter knows, my kid knows, that we don't buy water, plastic water bottles, that we bring our water bottles. It's not difficult, but until the city does it on a larger level, then nothing's going to change that's big enough. Our family can't do it all. Letitia's family can't do it all. It has to be on a systems level. My daughter does want to say something. Eleanor, are you ready? Not yet. She's not ready yet. Hopefully someone else has a public comment. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other general public comment this evening? All right. Third time. We tried, we tried. All right. Seeing no additional public comment, we will move on to our consent agenda items listed there, were approved unanimously in city council standing committees. Pardon me. We save a little time on Monday evenings by considering these items all at once. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll invite comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks. We have six items on tonight's consent agenda. The first is always is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable. And this week, they're in the amount of $509,862.36 for checks that are dated tomorrow, March 19th, 2019. Number two is to award an increase of $5,350 to the March 27th, 2018 City of Missoula Brownsfield Subgrant Award to Homeward Incorporated for total subgrant award of $80,350 for soil remediation at 1717 Montana Street. And authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to that award reflecting this change in the budget and to extend the project deadline. Number three is to set a public hearing on April 1st, 2019 on a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the City of Missoula, Montana, a set forth in the fiscal year 2019 budget and capital improvement plan that increases the total city budgeted expenditures by $491,000 and appropriates the special revenue fund expenditures by $41,000 and the capital improvement fund expenditures by $450,000 that were not adopted and identified in the original budget and for capital projects approved and not funded in the adopted budget. Number four, super duper long. It is all of our, it's the city's construction materials, so let's get going. The first part of this is to award the bid for 500 tons of emulsified asphalt. That's CRS 2P polymer, the modified, to Calumet Refining Company of Great Falls, Montana, in the amount of $455,000, excuse me, it's terrible, but it's not quite that bad. It's $455.25 a ton for a total of $227,625, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Award the bid for 2,000 tons of hot-mixed asphalt, that's grade B asphalt, to Knife River of Missoula, Montana, at $49.50 a ton for a total of $99,000, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Award the bid for 2,000 tons of sand-surfacing materials to Western Excavating of Missoula, Montana, at $20 a ton for a total of $40,000, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Award the bid for 3,000 tons of 3/8-inch seal coat aggregate to Western Excavating of Missoula, Montana, at $28.75 a ton for a total of $86,250, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Award the bid for 1,000 tons of drain aggregate, or sump rock, to Knife River of Missoula, Montana, excuse me, to Western Excavating of Missoula, Montana, excuse me, for $30 a ton for a total of $30,000, and authorize the return of bid bonds. There's only two more. Award the bid for 1,000 tons of half-inch seal coat aggregate to Western Excavating of Missoula, Montana. That cost is $28.75 a ton for a total of $28,750, and authorize the return of bid bonds. And finally, to award the bid for 2,000 tons of half-inch sand-surfacing to Knife River of Missoula, Montana, at $14 a ton for a total of $28,000, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Number five is to award the bid for construction services on the Spruce Street and South Avenue Water Main Replacement Project to Western Excavating of Missoula, Montana. The low bidder for an amount not to exceed $602,550, and authorize the return of bid bonds. And finally, number six is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with WGM Group of Missoula, Montana, for development of the Missoula Public Works Standards and Specifications Manual in an amount not to exceed $49,910.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Anyone in the audience care to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Ms. Davis?
Good evening. Andrea Davis, Executive Director of Homeward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I just wanted to speak briefly to this consent agenda item, which is for our Montana Street Homes Project and the request that we've made to the city for an additional $53,000.50, $5,350. And I wanted to emphasize something that is relative, not only to a project update, but also because you're going to be seeing the housing policy coming forward from the Housing and Community Development Office here shortly. And it's that we have six small homes at this property, and normally a $5,000 overage like this would be something that would be easily absorbed into one of our larger multifamily projects, especially something like Sweetgrass Commons, that was, you know, an $8 million project. In this case, however, this $5,000 would get passed along to the homeowners because developing single-family homes that for sale, that are for people that are earning 80% and below area median income, are extremely thin, as you can imagine. And we can go through some of the project details later when it says not public comment on the consent agenda. But I wanted just to seed the conversation that you'll be having on the housing policy coming up here shortly, and mention that the ability for us to be able to recoup this $5,000 will then afford Homeward the ability to not pass along those costs to the homeowner and/or for Homeward to eat those costs, which, you know, as an organization that wants to continue to do this work, it helps us be able to continue to pay our staff to be able to do that. So it's an important project overage that we appreciate the support. Quick update I just wanted to mention is that we have four of the homes under contract. Two are still available, two bedrooms. And so for the public that may be listening, those are for sale at $120,000 apiece. You are, you must income qualify at 80% of the area median income. We are seeing a lot of single people that are interested in these homes largely because of the size. They're 550 square feet. So for a lot of people, they're downsizing and finding them to be quite convenient for what they want to be able to care for. And generally speaking, depending on your circumstances, you're looking at maybe a $750 total home payment all the way in. So if anybody's interested, you know where to find me. I'm sorry, it's a sales plug, but I think it's important for the public to hear that there are two homes available at this price point of $120,000, which we know that there's not many out there available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Davis does not get a commission? Questions or comments on the consent agenda from council members? We'll start with Ms. Merritt.
For the record, I will be abstaining from voting on item number six.
And Ms. Anderson?
I just think it's important, I appreciated Andrea's update, but I also think that the, it's important to note that that increase comes out of a specific fund that goes to remediation for projects like this. This is not Homeward coming forward and asking for an additional $5,000 out of the general fund. This is a specific fund for specifically things like this. So I think that that's important to note.
Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we please divide the question to vote on item one separately?
Which item?
Item one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Von Laasberg?
I also appreciate Ms. Davis being here. I think it's also important to note that the overage was because, if I remember this correctly, there was an unanticipated buried structure, which you couldn't have anticipated by definition.
Further discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote on item number one.
Okay, on the claims, I'll start roll with Anderson. Anderson votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. DeBary? DeBary votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes no. Von Laasberg? Von Laasberg votes yes. And West? West votes yes. Would anyone really change your vote? That is eight ayes, one nay, and three absent.
And on items two through six?
On items two through six, Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Kares? Kares votes yes. DeBary? DeBary votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. Von Laasberg? Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. And Anderson? Anderson votes yes. So on items two through five, we have nine ayes and three absent. And on item number six, we have eight ayes, one abstention, and three absent.
And the consent agenda is approved. I'm unaware of any comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, or the community forum this evening. We do have two special presentations in the form of proclamations. Ladies and gentlemen, whereas the month of March is Women's History Month, which celebrates the significant contributions of women of all races, ethnicities, and backgrounds, and the contributions they've made to the world, and whereas women play a critical role in the vitality and diversity of our communities and are essential to ensuring Montana is well-represented, and whereas while the 20th century was a pivotal, pivotal, pivotal time of growth for women entering politics, women remain underrepresented in male-dominated fields, and thus providing opportunities to support women in public office is imperative. And whereas recognizing women in public office will bring awareness to the fundamental necessity of their work and will inspire other young people to serve their communities, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor of the City of Missoula and the Missoula City Council that March 19th, 2019, hereby be proclaimed Celebrating Women in Public Office Day. And we call upon the people of Missoula and Montana to unite as we support the success of women in public office and observe every March 19th with appropriate activities, events, and programs, like a city council meeting. On the eve, right? We are lucky to be well-served on this body by women and hope to have more. Next, ladies and gentlemen, whereas public transit benefits us all in Missoula by reducing traffic and parking congestion, improving our air quality, and making our city more accessible to all, and whereas public transit operators fill an important role in our community by getting people where they need to go, from work and school to medical appointments, social services, groceries, and more, and whereas public transit operators frequently go above and beyond the call of duty, working long hours and safely operating our transit system in rain, snow, extreme cold, wind, and other inclement weather, and whereas public transit operators help build our community by knowing their passengers, celebrating their successes, aiding in times of crisis, and greeting them every day with friendly faces. And whereas Mountain Line provides essential services to our community at zero fare for the benefit of all residents and visitors of Missoula, now therefore I, John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, hereby recognize this, the 18th day of March 2019, as Transit Operator Appreciation Day. And when the weather is cold and the snow is deep, those buses keep rolling. So thank you, Bill, for being here on behalf of your colleagues at Mountain Line. You want that?
With that, you get free parking after five?
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like.
I apologize, first of all. I think the mayor gave me whatever he had. I would just like to say a thank you to everyone on council for all of your support of public transit in Missoula. And we really wanted to make a special effort to recognize the operators today. You know, frequently, not that many people think about it, but they're on the road every single day of the year regardless of the conditions. They frequently go above and beyond the call of duty, as they did this winter in aiding our housing crisis, and also just with their passengers. Just in the last couple weeks, I can think of two amazing stories. One, we had a very young woman who was suffering a health emergency. She was scared, understandably very frightened. One of our operators safely, you know, managed to park the bus and stayed with her, kept her calm while emergency responders were coming to her aid. And she was so thankful to just have that kind, friendly face there to help her in such a dire time. In another case, we had a, sorry, a rider who is visually impaired, and it was her lifetime dream not too long ago to see Garth Brooks. Not see him, but hear him, obviously. This is a really big thing for her. And this operator went out of his way to take up a collection from a number of us, and we were able to send her on an all-expenses-paid trip to see Garth Brooks in Billings. So that's just two of the things that our operators do all the time, and it's so great to have your support in city government for the work that they do. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Bill. We will move on, ladies and gentlemen, to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Pardon me. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting comment in a formal way on a variety of issues, and following a staff report on each of these, council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. And we'll start with an ordinance amending our Missoula Municipal Code Regarding Water Service Line Maintenance and Responsibilities. And Mr. Bowman has our staff report this evening.
Good evening. Dennis Bowman, Deputy Public Works Director of the Utilities. In ordinance of the City of Missoula, Missoula County, Montana, amending Title 13, Missoula Municipal Code, Chapter 13.30.340, entitled Duty to Maintain Curb Cock and Curb Box by Adding the Provisions Requiring Property Owners to Maintain Their Water Service Lines, Allowing Owners Additional Days to Make Water Line Repairs, and Authorizing Missoula Water Division to Add Outstanding Repair Charges to an Owner's Bill. Duty to Maintain Curb Cocks, Curb Boxes, and Service Lines, the owner shall be responsible for properly maintaining the curb cock and curb boxes and service line. If it becomes necessary for that kind, friendly face there to help her in such a dire time. In another case, we had a, sorry, a rider who is visually impaired, and it was her lifetime dream not too long ago to see Garth Brooks. Not see him, but hear him, obviously. This is a really big thing for her. And this operator went out of his way to take up a collection from a number of us, and we were able to send her on an all-expenses-paid trip to see Garth Brooks in Billings. So that's just two of the things that our operators do all the time, and it's so great to have your support in city government for the work that they do. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Bill. We will move on, ladies and gentlemen, to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Pardon me. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for inviting comment in a formal way on a variety of issues, and following a staff report on each of these, council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. And we'll start with an ordinance amending our Missoula Municipal Code regarding water service line maintenance and responsibilities. And Mr. Bowman has our staff report this evening.
Good evening. Dennis Bowman, Deputy Public Works Director of the Utilities. In ordinance of the city of Missoula, Missoula County, Montana, amending Title 13, Missoula Municipal Code, Chapter 13.30.340, entitled Duty to Maintain Curb Cock and Curb Box by Adding the Provisions Requiring Property Owners to Maintain Their Water Service Lines, Allowing Owners Additional Days to Make Water Line Repairs, and Authorizing Missoula Water Division to Add Outstanding Repair Charges to an Owner's Bill. Duty to maintain curb cocks, curb box, and service line, the owner shall be responsible for properly maintaining the curb cock and curb box and service line. If it becomes necessary for Missoula Water Division to shut off the water service at the water main due to the inoperability or inaccessibility of the curb box, or due to leaking service line causing waste of water, the owner shall be responsible to complete the necessary repairs within 21 calendar days following written notice. If the owner is unable to perform this duty, or otherwise fails to make the repair within the notice period, and a potential safety hazard or likelihood of property or infrastructure damage exists, the Water Division may complete the work and charge the owner for labor, equipment, and materials, and administrative costs. This charge shall be added to the next water bill, or an acceptable payment plan must be approved by the Missoula Water Division within 30 days following the next billing date after work is completed.
Mr. Bowman, what's different about our existing ordinance and this amendment?
The difference is, is that it was 10 days, allowing the customers to have 10 days. We changed it going to 21 days, but we just want to have better clarity exactly giving us the authorization to shut the water off.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this amendment to our ordinances? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just kind of a quick question. I'm in support of the ordinance, but I know that during the busy season, it could be hard to get somebody out to the house within 21 days. Could we look at maybe doing 30 days? Something that gives them a little bit more of a buffer, just an extra week.
We could do that. What we really want them to do within that 21 days is to try to get a contractor, but mainly notify us. If they notify us that they're trying to work on it, because there is some times during the year contractors aren't available. As long as they communicate with us, we can give them. And the contractor says they can't get there for two more weeks, and it's the 15th day, we will definitely work with them.
Further questions? Mr. Dabari?
Mr. Bowman, I have a question for you. The first sentence of the ordinance, the owner shall be responsible, that sentence, is that a change in existing policy?
No, it is not. The owner's always been, the property owner's always been responsible for the water service line, where it connects to the water main, all the way into the house.
Mr. Von Laasberg?
That was my same sort of question. I wanted to make sure that we clarified that we're not changing the demarcation of where responsibility. That was the way it was under private ownership of the utility. And in fact, I think it's worth people knowing that at one point in time, the demarcation used to be at the property line for other utilities, and the legislature, in what was a pretty secretive move, and this is years, if not decades ago, actually changed it to make the utility, I'm sorry, the property owner responsible all the way from the main to the house, basically. So it's important that the public knows that this is not a change in policy relative to the demarcation of responsibility.
Further questions?
You are correct.
That was sneaky. Further questions, Ms. Merritt?
Dennis, if a homeowner has a problem and they don't know where to start as far as finding a contractor, is there help available for them?
Yes, there is. We have a pamphlet that, and a letter that goes along when we notify the customer, and it gives a list of all the contractors that are licensed and bonded in the city of Missoula.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, who's filling in for Mr. Hess this evening? Ms. Becerra?
This is the second and final reading to adopt an ordinance of the city of Missoula, Missoula County, Montana, amending Title 13, Missoula Municipal Code, Chapter 13.30.340, entitled Duty to Maintain Curb Cock and Curb Box by Adding the Provisions Requiring Property Owners to Maintain Their Water Service Lines, Allowing Owners Additional Days to Make Their Water Line Repairs, and Authorizing Missoula Water Division to Add Outstanding Repair Charges to an Owner's Water Bill.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I would just like to propose an amendment to extend that 21 days out to 30 days.
Mr. Ramos has made a motion to amend. Is there discussion on the motion to amend? Ms. Merritt?
I spoke with Dennis about this because I had the same concern. I know a property owner had a problem last summer and had a hard time getting a contractor out in a pretty timely fashion, but I think that Dennis addressed that with noting that what we're asking is for the homeowners to take action, to contact us, and let us know that they're working on the problem. To me, that seems adequate.
On the motion to amend, Ms. Anderson?
I would agree with what Councilwoman Merritt said. I think that it's important to note that this amendment, or this amendment to this ordinance, actually adds days that were currently not available to homeowners. Originally, the ordinance said 10 days. Now we're extending that out to 21 days, and I think that it's, you know, as Mr. Bowman has said, and I think has the interactions with Missoula Water have poured out, that it's, you know, they're willing to work with the customers, and it's about getting that process started. There's not a clock that ticks and that chimes at midnight on the 21st day. So I think that we are already extending this and that it's adequate.
Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I definitely want to acknowledge what Dennis said, and I appreciate that. I just simply wanted to add, just an extra week in case somebody's out of town, or there's something that comes up, just I feel like one week of leniency. And again, it is way better than 10 days, but I just feel like an extra week of leniency might be nice for some folks, and you never know what situation could arise in somebody's personal life. So I just think one week isn't too unreasonable to extend it.
Further discussion on the motion to amend? Ms. Becerra?
Dennis, is there an advantage to you knowing earlier rather than later that there is a problem or that something needs to be done? I was thinking that maybe 21 days seems like would give you a heads-up that something that you need to go in there and do something about it, and maybe that extra week that Mr. Ramos is proposing might delay that and cost more damage than if you know about it sooner. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. It is a benefit for us, it's changing it from 10 to 21 days because we've had some customers been out of town, but the main thing is we want them to contact us because we need to let, we need them to let us know that they know about it and that they're working on it, because we get so many calls from the neighbors and people driving by on the streets that there's a leak. And with the customer contacting us earlier, it helps our customer service folks to be able to answer those questions when they call in. We're not going out there at midnight on the 21, on the 21st day. We won't be doing that. We've even gone in the past that even if we set the letter, we send a second letter, and we even knock on the door if nobody's around, strictly that if they're on vacation or not.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, anyone in the audience care to comment on the motion to amend? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion fails. We're back to the main motion. Further discussion? Mr. Dabari?
I appreciate Mr. Von Laasberg expanding on the issue that came up earlier about existing policy and the history around that, and I hope that as we continue to operate the system and consider policy around service lines, that we think about what an appropriate amendment to this might be, and whether there's a bargain we can strike between what the utility's responsible for and what the homeowner's responsible for in a way that doesn't put some potential homeowners out. There's specific circumstances that would require a lot of service line work, or work that a homeowner may not have ever anticipated, and I think it's worth considering that. Additionally, I did receive a phone call from a constituent about this, and I appreciate the conversation that I was able to have with Mr. Bowman. I think it's important that the legislative records show that the intent here is to only take advantage of this opportunity for the water company to do the work in the case of an emergency where there is threat to somebody's personal safety, or personal property, or municipal property, that can't otherwise be abated by having the homeowner do it if it takes too much time or they're not responsive. So I think it's important that everyone understand that the intent behind this is that the city would only become involved when it was an emergency, and that they would do everything they could to work with the homeowner to figure out a way to make sure that the payment takes place in a reasonable way.
Mr. Von Laasberg?
Thanks. Service lines are a really important part of the system. We know that there's significant leakage on service lines generally in the system. I believe our next item is actually Service Line Loan Program. One of the things, and it came up during the entire saga over public ownership, was how to do, how to provide more options for utility customers in this area, and I think you're seeing exactly that. You're seeing the next item on our agenda, which is a Water Service Line Loan Program. And we recently had in council, though it doesn't require an action, but there's an insurance program that is operating in multiple cities in Montana as well as across the country. And so there's some choices there that people are starting to get, and those are important. And I, back on the issue of sort of demarcation of responsibility, I had a constituent mention that, you know, that there was a call into KGVO and a discussion about how Missoula is the only place where the utility, where the property owner responsibility runs into the house, and that's simply just actually not true. There's a smattering of responsibility paradigms, if you will, across the country. Sometimes it stops at property line. Other places, it's at the house. Other places, it's all the way out at the water main. We've got this situation that we have, and we're bringing additional tools for the public to use to help finance these costs, because as Dr. Dabari mentioned, they can be substantial in certain cases. So I'm glad to see this. This is a policy opportunity area, and we're bringing some policies to the public that help out in this area.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, on the ordinance, Kares? Kares votes yes. Dabari? Dabari votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. Von Laasberg? Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. Anderson? Anderson votes yes. And Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? Nine ayes, three absent.
And the ordinance is approved. And while we're on the topic, our second public hearing is on ordinance to establish the Missoula Water Service Line Loan Program. Once again, Mr. Bowman has our staff report.
The item is an ordinance to establish a Missoula Water Service Line Loan Program. This ordinance seeks to establish a program by Missoula Water to provide temporary relief from the costs of water service line connection, repair, and related work for eligible residential property owners. This program will be administered and funded by Missoula Water. The customer receiving the loan will be able to pay off the balance on their monthly water bill. This program will be available to all customers based on the eligibility criteria set forth in MMC 3.17.030 without income restrictions. The Water Line Loan Fund will contain an amount appropriated by city council to grant loans to fulfill the purpose of this program. The alternative fund offered through the Human Resource Council will remain in use for low-income customers.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. A new loan program, and with that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council this evening? Mr. Dabari?
Mr. Bowman, I'm wondering if you could tell us what the source of the loan fund would be?
It's out of the enterprise fund. Basically, we've started setting this up and saving some money, and we've gotten excellent prices on some of our capital projects, reinvesting into the system, and we felt that this was another way to help out the customers that own the system.
Okay. Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have a quick question about the interest rates. I see that they'll be charged on the unpaid loan ballots, just kind of based on whatever the last bond issue sold for curb, gutter, sidewalk. What was that last interest rate, just out of curiosity?
I believe it was around 4%.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, Ms. Becerra?
This is the second and final reading to adopt an ordinance amending Missoula Municipal Code, Title III, entitled Revenue and Finance, to establish Chapter 3.17, entitled Water Line Loan Program, to provide temporary relief from the costs of water service line connection, repair, and related work for eligible residential property owners.
Thank you. That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Von Laasberg?
Everything I said before, and I just wanted to say thanks to Dennis and to, I think, the finance folks for putting this together. This is a great example of good thinking on behalf of the customers.
I agree with you.
Further discussion? Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I want to echo what President Von Laasberg said, and I think that it's, you know, this is one of numerous examples of the benefits that Missoula citizens are having because we took the bold action to acquire our own water system. Previously, you were still responsible for the water line from the curb box to your house, and if something happened, you were on your own. You're still responsible, but now there is a way for you to get a low-interest-rate loan. You have a utility who's in your best interest looking to work with you, and I just, you know, continue to be impressed every time that Mr. Bowman and the folks at Missoula Water come and present to us about, you know, some of the innovative thinking that they're doing to, you know, benefit directly the people of Missoula, and I want to thank them, and I think this is another great example of the benefits that our citizens are gaining from owning our own water system.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the ordinance, Dabari? Dabari votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. Von Laasberg? Von Laasberg votes yes. West? West votes yes. Anderson? Anderson votes yes. Becerra? Becerra votes yes. And Kares? Kares votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is nine ayes and three absent.
And the ordinance is approved. Our third and final public hearing this evening is on a resolution to amend, remove, or relocate an alley barricade, and Mr. Monroe has our staff report this evening. I'll note that for some technical reasons, we'll be holding this public hearing open. You won't take action this evening until March 25. Oh, the high-tech cover.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I had come just to be a backup to Jordan. I hadn't planned to present, but I guess we'll call this "winging it." So what we have before you is a resolution to amend or to override a previous resolution by city council from 1988. Back in 1988, complaints from neighbors on the end of an alley that connects South Avenue to Livingston was complaining about high-traffic volumes and speeds. At that time, council went ahead and approved the barrier. The barrier is mid-block of this alley. It's adjacent to the existing Hoagieville. Jumped forward 31 years, and Hoagieville is now transforming into a brood pub house? Brood house, brood tap house? Hoagieville currently has three accesses. Two of them are on Higgins. One of them is on Livingston. That was the nature of a drive-thru. They had lots of ways to get in and out. The new brood tap house takes up the lower half of this parcel. The new brood tap house takes up the lower half of this parcel. It eliminates the second Higgins access and eliminates the access on Livingston, leaving them just one access off of Higgins. Given the layout of the parking lot, the needs for deliveries and trash, they have asked for a second access at the west end of their parking lot onto this alley. The 1988 council had closed that portion of the alley from the mid-block south to Livingston, and that's how it exists today. So we had brought forward two resolutions. One of them is to remove the barrier in its entirety. This would allow traffic to flow in all directions in the alley, including customers of the brood tap house that could leave and either head south to Livingston or north to South Avenue, north to South Avenue. The second option is to keep the barrier in place, but go ahead and open the south half of the alley for just the brood tap houses' customers. As part of their requirements, they would have to pave that alley. Right now, it's just gravel. And, well, those are the two resolutions right now.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Good winging. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment?
Hi, guys. I'm Kayla Crooks. I heard about the alley opening up, and I will say I've worked slash lived at that Domino's location, right, located there by that alley for about the last six years. And I love the second idea of keeping that barrier up because I do believe they need access to their business. I understand that. But if we open up that alley completely, we are going to have people coming straight through our parking lot where our delivery drivers need to park and go in and out for their deliveries all day, all night. And I'm really concerned about the safety of increased traffic, you know, to go, be able to go all the way through without a barrier right there. I feel like there'd be more potential for accidents. There's a lot of pedestrians in that area that come from the alley to the gas station right there. All of our crew were outside a lot. And I just, having that barrier there really limits the speed people are going to go through that area. And having it open, I just don't know how safe that would be to have people just cruising through that. I mean, that's where our business is, and that's, we have guys backing in and out of their spots, and we're careful. We're always very safe with our deliveries. But I think that's adding a much bigger risk, having that completely open, I mean, without any barrier at all. So I just like everyone to keep that in mind. That would really be detrimental to us and our safety, and it really worries me. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Stacy McMillan, and I'm the wife of one of the owners of the Domino's right there. And we're just really concerned about, you know, the reason why that barrier was up 30, whatever, one years ago is, kind of hasn't changed. We've only gotten busier. And although we have been asked to like, like, make a pledge that our drivers are going to maintain a five mile an hour speed limit, we do everything in our power to maintain our drivers drive safely on the road, but we can't be in their cars with them making sure that they're doing that. And so we just wanted to voice that, you know, although our drivers are safe and drive safely, and we do what the best that we can to maintain the safety of our drivers, asking us to ensure that they're not going to do this, you know, over the five mile speed limit or anything isn't really something that we can take on. Having that barrier there, I feel keeps the, you know, keeps us safer, and it keeps, you know, them from being able to speed and endanger anybody in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. Yes, sir.
Chris Goble with Hoagieville. I did want to add on to Troy's. We had discussed last, two Wednesdays ago, a possible speed bump in that alley to help with the concerns about keeping the drivers from going too fast. I didn't know if anybody had talked about that. So that could also be an option, is to add speed bumps to the alley to help slow people down. I don't know if that...
Thank you, Mr. Goble. Troy?
Troy Monroe. In response to Chris's comment that, yes, city engineering would be in support of providing speed bumps in the alley, I reached out to both Missoula Fire and Missoula Police. Neither one of them have any issues. In fact, Missoula Fire said a speed bump would be better than a barrier. So we would be for those type of mitigation efforts.
All right. With that, we will keep this public hearing open. And I think we'll hold questions until we take final action on the 25th. And that is it for public hearings this evening. Thank you, Mr. Monroe, and thank you all. We'll move on to communications from the mayor. Had a really rough week last week around the world and here in Missoula, Montana, and I wanted to acknowledge a couple of things. One is our sister-city relationship with the folks in Palmerston North. And while the tragedy of Christchurch was some distance from our friends in Palmerston North, fact of the matter is that that is a, it's a country filled with lovely people who are peaceful and kind and generous, and their world was rocked. And we want to send our sympathy and our concern their way. Closer to home, we had a state trooper suffer critical injuries at the hands of someone wielding a couple of guns. We had one soul die. We had two others injured. And I am reminded, every time something like that happens, the degree to which the women and men of the Missoula Police Department, our public safety staff, put themselves at risk. And wanted to acknowledge that service again tonight. When the phone rings at 1:00 in the morning and I see the police chief's name, I'm never sure what that call is about. And in this case, it wasn't one of our officers, but it was a, it was a public servant who is decent enough to show up every day to do the hard work that a lot of us wouldn't do. And there are a lot of those folks who are doing that work. So we're thinking about our friend as he recovers, we hope, in Salt Lake City. And I think of all the officers who work every day for the city of Missoula and want to thank them and thank the troopers and thank everyone who is engaged in keeping us safe and sound because it's tough work. We begin general comments from council members this evening with Mr. Dabari.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I received a phone call from a constituent who received a piece of hate. I'm not sure what to call it. I don't want to call it literature, but junk mail or whatever. And, and in light of what happened in New Zealand, I think it is important that we reflect on what we're willing to tolerate in this community when it comes to hate speech and consider if there's appropriate action on the part of this council to, to address that.
Ms. Jones?
On the, on the same topic, I heard in a roundabout way that someone, I'm not even sure who, but someone in Ward 3, which is my ward, also received a similar piece of, a pamphlet or leaflet or something that, I don't know if it was, I don't even know the substance of it, but it was described to me as a hate speech. And I think it's important that we pay attention to this. If people receive this kind of thing, I encourage them to contact their city councilors so we can at least start getting a sense of if, what's going on out there. I don't know that the police have tools at this point to address this, but I think you need to contact the police, contact a city councillor, and, and I think we should pursue if there are any tools to address something like this.
I just want to echo your comments, Mayor, relative to the folks in New Zealand and the victims and the families here at home, thinking of all of them. Thanks for recognizing those folks.
Last week, I attended a neighborhood council meeting with the new residents from Canyon Creek Village, and I have to say I was very impressed with the delivery of information that each one of the department representatives gave to the new residents, and just very proud of the work that they do and, and how welcoming they, they made everyone feel.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too wanted to echo a lot of your comments, sending my heart out to the families of the victims of the shooting in New Zealand and also to the families of the victims of the shooting here in our hometown of Missoula and to our state trooper. I wish him a speedy recovery. And as you said so eloquently, a lot of these, these officers, they put their lives on the line for an often thankless job. I mean, people call them pigs. They spit on them. They're worried about, a lot of these police officers can't go into restaurants where the food's not prepared right in front of them because they're afraid that somebody in the bag's going to spit in their food or do something to their food. And even when they're out, not in uniform, they're worried about being recognized, having their family harassed. And on top of it, there's the incredible danger that they face that often gets overlooked when we sometimes look down on, on officers because maybe we were breaking the law and somebody called us out on it, so we're not acting rational. And I think that in these moments, that it's important that we stand together as a community and, and support all of our officers. And my heart goes out to the victims in New Zealand and to the victims here in Missoula.
Ms. West?
I would like to invite folks in Missoula to come attend an event that's going to be on March 20th at the Public Library from 7:00 to 8:30. It's called Myths and the Realities of Housing: The Mismatch Between Incomes and Costs in Missoula and What Can Be Done About It. This event is put on by the League of Women Voters, Homeward, and the Missoula Housing Authority. So I hope lots of folks come and participate. And I, I received Tate Mail on my car, so if we all want to talk about what to do about this later, I welcome that conversation. So, thanks.
Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your comments. I appreciate them, and my heart and prayers go out to the families of our friends and neighbors in New Zealand as well as here locally. You know, I want to recognize that Officer Palmer was a graduate of Sentinel High School. Went to high school with my little sister. And that the community here in Missoula and across Montana as well as Utah has been, incredibly generous with their support. There has been an officer posted in Trooper's, Palmer's hospital room, including his, where he was having surgery. The GoFundMe that has been set up for him has reached almost $150,000. Do want to note that to avoid scammers, please don't give to a GoFundMe that you don't find posted on the Montana Highway Patrol page. I think that we are all a very generous community, but we want to make sure that it's going to the intended recipients. And I also just want to acknowledge the families of these first officer, or these first responders. You know, every night, they pray that their person or their family member comes home, and not, unfortunately, that's not always the case. And I also did get a call from constituents about hate mail receipt, or mail is not the right word, propaganda, I guess would be more appropriate, on their doorstep. And I think that that is not the Missoula that I know and love and am proud to represent. And so I hope that as many community members can come out to celebrate our brothers and sisters in Islam during the Islamic Week in April to really show that our community stands behind everybody, and even if you don't practice the same faith or come from the same background, that, that sort of hateful propaganda is not welcome here in Missoula. And we need to continue to send that message in big and small ways. Thank you.
Ms. Merritt? I will note with regard to the anti-Semitic lit, I guess is a loose term. We've had a number of reports. If, if folks receive any of that, please let the police department know. We're keeping track. I met with members of the Jewish community and the larger faith community. I've also met with members of the African-American community and, and the Venezuelan community. And we are working together on an event that we hope will remind folks that hate isn't welcome in Missoula, and we'll keep you posted as all of that comes together. We have no committee reports this evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our new business item is the legislative update. Busy weekend in Helena with regard to Medicaid. We had our weekly league conference call. The league continues to monitor all of what you would imagine we would be monitoring. And in particular today, we're, we're leaning into the question of whether some of our share of gaming and other revenue should be moved to support the Public Defender's Office. And we think not. And we're expressing that as firmly as we can. Any questions or comments regarding the legislative update? Seeing none of those, are there any additional items to be referred? Seeing none, any miscellaneous communications, reports, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none of those, as always, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.